And I call this meeting to order. We'll start over. It is six thirty P M. And I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. This evening I have one proclamation. And I'll read that real quick. City of Winona proclamation, whereas Bangladeshi alumni and their families and current students and their families will gather in Winona from all over the world for the first ever Winona State University Bangladesh Alumni Gathering on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, whereas this dedicated and engaged group of alumni has stayed connected to the university and the Winona community for the past thirty years. Whereas Bangladeshi alumni have traveled the world to come back to the roots in Winona, Minnesota to immerse, reminisce, and reconnect with the university and the local community. Whereas the success of these individuals has been directly related to the relationships between the faculty, staff, and students at Winona State University and their interactions as citizens of Winona. Whereas the alumni of Bangladesh are ambassadors for generations of students attending Winona State and have a direct impact on the economy and resources in Winona. Now, therefore, the city of Winona, Minnesota recognizes and congratulates the W S U Bangladesh Alumni Community for staying connected to their core, to the core of their educational journey in Winona. In witness whereof, I have hereon too set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed this first day of August twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had a big thing happen today. The roundabout opened on sixty-one and forty-three. Councilmember Borzakowski asked to say a few things real quick.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this morning, I'm guessing around six A M. Maybe earlier, the roundabout on Highway fourteen, sixty-one, forty-three is now open for traffic. Uh, I've been through it around six times already today and the traffic inside the circle appears to be moving very, very well. There are some traffic delays yet out on Mankato Avenue because of construction. But like you say, the circle itself, everybody was yielding to everyone. If you're in the circle, you need to yield. If you're in the circle, you do not need to yield. You have the right of way. Thank you. So like I know what I'm talking about, but but anyway. I said that it seems to be going, working very, very good. And one other thing, Brian, on the signs on the highway, if you're coming from La Crosse, it states, uh, Highway forty-three, north and south and all that. Suggestion came this morning that if under that sign, they would put Mankato Avenue. Cause they'll probably have a better understanding, uh, trying to connect it with forty-three. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, George. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Muller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the, the petition requests and communications, item three point one is the Golden Rule docking request for October fourth.
Make a motion to approve the docking request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I just think this is exciting. I'm, I can't wait to see it.
Yeah.
We'll have it here.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is a massage therapy license for Lijia Ma.
Make a motion to approve that license.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is a black party request by Kai Alpha. Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, I'll take the second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is a request from the Main Street Program for the Big Muddy Bruin Q to be held on September third and fourth. And I believe Jenna is here if you have questions. Jenna Lubinski.
I make a motion to approve the license agreement and authorize the city manager and clerk to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion or questions? George.
If she'd like to tell us about the event a little bit.
Be great. Yeah, please.
Hate to have you drive all the way down here and then, oh, I don't have to say nothing.
I have been, uh, asking for the time for, uh, Big Muddy this year. We are going to be putting on a family friendly events with music and things pretty, you know, Winona's little drummers are gonna be there on Saturday, Rockwood, Raina, Hammy, and Market Saturday and Sunday. And a wonderful Bloody Mary's.
Sorry.
A lot of new exciting events that were being passed on me that I took over in the rest month. So, yeah. That's what we've got going on. My man, the music, beverage, uh, friendly events. Any questions?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you for picking up the baton and continuing on and adding the big, the Bloody Mary. I love a good Bloody Mary. I'm looking forward to that, even if I have to volunteer to get into that tent. Looking forward to it. So thank you for taking it on and making sure it keeps happening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we had a motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point five is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Big Muddy Bruin Q.
Make a motion to approve, uh, the license agreement.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And passes.
Item three point six is the airport F B O lease fees. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any questions? George Boland is here. If anybody has any questions for him.
Yes.
Go ahead, Pam.
Questioned, yes. Um. I was wondering, George, what was going on the other night with all those helicopters flying over my house?
Well, let me, uh, first of all, do something first. I want to thank the council for considering this. And I also want to thank, uh, the administration who met with us before and talked about it. Now, in regards to the helicopters, I'm gonna vary from you, okay? Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you possibly missed a really great thing because Fifi came by. Now, everybody's going, who's Fifi? They think it's a cat, right? No, Fifi is a B twenty-nine. It's the oldest flying B twenty-nine in the United States that's currently flying. And she was in Rochester giving rides and they came down the Mississippi a multiple of times. So you missed that one, okay? If you did not see it, it's a great thing. Uh, and that is what they now call the commemorative air force is taking care of that. The other thing that happened, and I'll eventually get to the helicopters, is, uh, the Goodyear Blimp went up the river and it went down the river. So that was a great thing. So we hope that three M continues to have the golf, uh, tournament. In regards to the helicopters, it's summertime and what's going on, the reservists and the National Guard people are over at Camp McCoy and Volk Field and they're doing their training. And so they utilize us because we have the instrument approach procedures and all of that going on. So that's what you saw coming in here quite frequently. And they go at two week intervals. So they'll taper off as the summer goes by. But July and August is usually summer camp time for a lot of reservists and National Guard operations. So that's that question, okay? I threw it out a little bit, but that's okay.
Is, is Fifi coming back?
The Fifi won't come back in this year, okay? I don't know where she'll schedule. Uh, you know, it's a contract situation and Rochester might invite them back again. Now, we had about ten years ago, we had a B twenty-five here. I don't know if you remember that. That was a twin engine. Also a commemorative air force. And that was some people that we knew here in town that helped us out on that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Michelle?
George, how long have you run that airport out there? Because I, I don't want to age you, but I'm pretty sure that when I took a high school class that put high school students in, in airplanes and let us fly them, that you were running that airport way back.
Well, yes and no. First of all, uh, I don't run the airport. The airport runs me. I gotta understand that.
For letting it happen.
Lyle, Lyle Sauer was the instructor at the high school that did that program. And I was over at the university. So I came on to the field in nineteen sixty-nine is when I came on. And then the university program, we started in nineteen seventy-five. And then we became the fixed base operator in nineteen ninety-seven. Okay, so technically speaking, uh, we've been there longer than any other operator on the, in the history of the airport. And the airport's coming up here on seventy-fifth anniversary. We're kind of thinking of getting some people together. We had to, uh, stop, we went, I think thirty-three or thirty-four years with the fly-in, if you remember that. But we had all those students from Winona State. Uh, we don't have enough manpower, woman power to get this going now. But I think we're gonna get it back together and we're putting the finger on Steve Buzzwell to lead the pack on this one. But thank you.
Good choice, but I just wanted to say thank you for spending so much time there. Uh, I think you could have left many times over had you chosen to, but obviously you love what you do. And I know we appreciate having you there. I don't think we could find better. So just hang in there as long as the airport wants to hold you and, and I think Winona will be better for it.
I appreciate that. And Vivian's on your side too. She thinks I should, I'd be spending so much time, but she understands. So are there any questions about what we're asking for and why we're asking for it? And Dave Murdis is here if you need some facts that we may have that I have messed up on. It's just really important and we really appreciate what's going on. This gentleman has been fantastic, but he's not as good as another individual that's in the operation. And that's Glenn Albright. Glenn Albright is the maintenance guy at the airport and has just done a wonderful job. Night and day compared to some other operations how we have. But just to give you an example, every morning, eight o'clock, we go eight to about eight twenty and we share information, what he's doing, what we're doing, what we expect happening throughout that day and beyond. And that's really, really important. And when winter time comes, there's just no question whatsoever what we have. But just to summarize real quick, we've had a significant change since two thousand and eighteen. We are, as far as I am concerned, the gateway greeter, one of them for this community. And that's what we're there for. And financially, we probably see more financial impact people come in. So we are there to great greet and welcome people and pro, provide them services. And our main, uh, income is from jet fuel. There's just no if, ands, or buts about it. And what's happened from, uh, two thousand and eighteen, the two jets that we had based here, the Mathie and the Fastenal Jet, their operation have changed, so they've moved away. To give you an example, uh, a year ago in Ju, in, uh, July, because we just went through it with David, we pumped about thirty-one hundred gallons, thirty-one, I think fifteen, something like that. Well, how about fourteen ninety-six? So about fifty-nine percent drop. And that's what we're asking for. And you were so gracious during the pandemic to waive these things. And that's what we're really asking for. We still will participate in the gallons flowing to you because that is there. And as we can able to turn the corner, we'll come back to you and say, hey, you know, we can eliminate this, this, and this. But I think I speak for all of our people, David and myself. If there's any issues, please contact us. Please tell us. We want to hear it first. Then you can go and tell anybody else you want. All right. Got that, Brian? Any questions?
George?
Uh, what is the price of a gallon of jet fuel now? Well, it's gonna change tomorrow morning. I think, uh, we have a retail price here of, uh, seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, our avgas went down today. We had a high of eight, oh, eight dollars and three cents. We are now at six ninety-nine. We have come down, but we were at five dollars and about twenty cents at the first of the, first of the year. So we follow it daily. We're a little different than most of the other operators. The most of the other operators go what they have on the ground. And now the guys that are selling for what they have, you know, LIFO, FIFO, you know, uh, the FIFO people can't buy as many gallons as they did the time before. So of the major operators in La Crosse, Rochester, Eau Claire, we're the least economical place to be. And we don't have any landing fees or charge ramp fees, et cetera, because you guys don't charge us for that piece of land. So we want to entertain people coming in.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? As always, just come and talk to us. David, do you have anything to add? No, he doesn't want to come up here. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, George. Appreciate it.
George.
All right, I lost track here again. Michelle, second, Eileen.
Borzakowski.
Borzakowski, sorry. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point seven is a request to hold the Warrior Waddle on October twenty-second. Move approval.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point eight is a request to accept the donation from the Sammy's Family Production Company for, um, additional electrical power at Perry Island Park.
I'd move approval to accept the donation from the Samus family.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, second from Pam. Have a question.
I just want to let the public know that, um, this family production company has graciously offered fourteen thousand sixteen dollars and sixty cents to this project, which is astounding, um, and very much appreciated. And we are aware that, uh, Prairie Island needs some more love and attention. And it's very, it's very kind of them to take profits and, and put it back into the place they use. So I'm, I'm appreciative. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments?
Is, uh, Mr. Samus here?
Isaac's here, yes.
Anything you'd like to say?
Nothing super specific. We just love the space and see this as a, a commitment to the health of the event and making it, uh, more sustainable for the long term. So, um, it's something we're happy to do, uh, to make sure that we can keep doing it.
How many years have you owned this now? Both in blue grounds?
Five.
Five?
I think we've been doing it since twenty twelve, though, on the staff. So twentieth year will be next year.
Okay, awesome.
Yep.
Thanks. Well, thanks again. Appreciate it very much. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement.
Make a motion to approve the agreement and direct staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? George?
Uh, how many years have we been, uh, with this agreement, Monica? No, it's quite a while.
I would venture probably close to twenty years with different routes over the years.
Good program.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is the Winona Area Mountain Bikers Service Agreement for Bluffside Park Trails.
Make a motion to approve the agreement and direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Second that.
Give a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. We do have Winona Area Mountain Bikers here. If anybody would like to speak to that matter or if anybody has any questions. Steve?
No, I'm, I'd, I'd like to hear from them. Yeah, it'd be great.
Yeah, this is Sam Zierden.
As Mayor Sherman said, my name is Sam Zierden. I am a board member for Winona Area Mountain Bikers, WAM. We're honored that the city council is willing to invest in trails and our communities. And we're excited to see how this agreement and this commitment to the health of our community can grow. We've worked extensively with Patrick Menton and Alicia Lano on city staff to get this agreement and we are thrilled. If you have any questions for us, I'm more than happy to answer.
Yeah. Michelle?
I don't really have a question. Oh, sorry.
Nope, go ahead, Michelle.
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you because I know for, um, a few years you, you went up and did these things volunteer. And it, I can only imagine the amount of work because I clear my own lot and it's, it's to keep on top of logs and trees and weeds and brush. And people discarding things is quite the, the tour. So from my perspective, money well spent and probably under, undervalued really. So thank you for doing the salmon to the whole group that's involved in it.
Thank you. We, we see it as a responsibility. We use those trails, our, our youth programming, which services over sixty-five young people, uses those trails extensively. We're, we're happy to see this commitment.
Steve, you had a question?
I really appreciate this as well. And let, let, let me speak to a larger, this, this helps to address a larger concern in, in a, in a positive way. Um, and it's maintenance of, of, of trails, maintenance of our, what we, park rec maintenance. It's, uh, it's, it's kind of the, uh, the, the gorilla in the room, okay? Or the elephant in the room. And, uh, this, this really takes a step. So it, it, it weighs on me thinking all of these awesome trails. We, we love awesome trails. But, but the, uh, the, the maintenance that we incur. So thank you for, for doing this. I do have some, some specific questions. I've, I've, you know, hiked and walked on those trails many times. Uh, so do you, do you bring some of your own equipment? I mean, do you have, do you have, do you have, you have Bobcats? You got, you got the excavators? Or did, described, describe this a little more?
Yeah, nothing of that size. Primarily, the equipment we use is leaf blowers, chainsaws, and weed whippers to keep the trails clear. And then it's a lot of handwork of cutting in drainage ditches. It's moving rocks so that some of the passes are more traversable. Um, it's, it's a lot of handwork.
Do you ever bring in, uh, do, does a city own one of those brush mowers that can mow like the side of a trail and push brush back? Do, do we?
Yeah.
But we would, we would do that. So some, some of this is going to be shared between city and between this organization, right? There's still some back and forth in this. Okay. Again, thank you very much for stepping in and formalizing, I think, what you guys have been doing uh, on your own for years. So, very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sam? Okay, I'll, it's staying from this phone. We had a motion from Michelle and a second from?
Aiden.
Pam. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the State of Minnesota Legacy Grant Agreement for Phase One of the Bluff Traverse Project.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Steve?
If I could, boy, uh, uh, maintenance. So, so again, you know, an, an awesome grant that we're getting and, uh, you know, trails that, that more trails that'll, that, that are going to be, uh, put in. But, but again, I gotta ask the question. Uh, who, who maintains this? Is, is this completely on us? Or what does that, what does that look like?
Alicia, could you maybe just break down like what's volunteer and what is city responsibility in terms of maintenance on the trails? Both the current and the future ones, please?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, part of why we wanted to do this WAM agreement previously is because of that specific thing. We understand that we have a lot of new trails coming and so we need a maintenance plan. Everybody knows that's important. You can't have trails without ma, proper maintenance. So, um, that's why we're really excited to have this agreement with WAM to help us with the maintenance. Of course, the city still owns the trails. We're still responsible. Um, so we hope, I hope in the future that we can have potentially a part-time park maintenance staff member, city staff that's trained in park maintenance as, as well to help assist WAM with this. Um, we know we can't just rely on volunteers for trail minute, maintenance. We don't want to, uh, wear them out by any means. Um, we want to keep them as long as possible. Um, so with the lead of Patrick Menton, we know that park maintenance will be out there as well, helping with tree removal, things like that. So, yeah, uh, good majority of it still will be, uh, our staff when needed. Um, and WAM understands that they will communicate with us when they need assistance. Um, and of course, big items like bridges and things like that, the city will still, um, you know, help fund those things. So, yeah, we hope that way WAM can someday fundraise and assist us with that, but.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding something. There's this new, the WAM agreement that we just did with the prior item. Does that take into account this, this motion that we're discussing right now? The Bluff Traverse? What's all, oh, okay.
Yep, it's all the same trails.
Get that piece.
Yeah, so the agreement with WAM is for Bluffside Park. And most of the grant, uh, money is going towards Bluffside Park. There are a few items in there that are for Garvin Heights Park and Sugarloaf Park as well, but the majority of it is for Bluffside Park.
And then part of this is to connect these trails from, and bringing signage all the way from Sugarloaf.
Yep, that's the master plan. Yep, yeah. So someday we'll get there. Um, so we're doing this in chunks. So you'll see tonight in the agenda, you're, the first one is phase one and the second one is phase two. So eventually there'll be a phase three and phase four. So it'll be continuous work to get that done.
Phases, total of four.
Potentially, yeah. So I just need, need the money. Maybe phase five or six too, you know? Keep it going.
Thank you. Any other, Pam, I'll get you, George, in a sec.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, thank, thank you, Alicia. I did, I did call today and, and talk to Patrick Menton a little bit about the, the rattlesnake habitat, which is up in the bluffs and which, uh, a few years ago, we had a lot of rattlesnakes coming out of their dens because of climate change and, and heat. And they were looking for water. So, and at that time, we talked about staying as far away from those dens as we could with our trails. So I take it that that's part of this plan as well.
Yeah, so we've been working closely with the D N R. Um, part of this, and you'll see in that, in that grant contract, uh, is that this is all pending a permit for the take of endangered and threatened species. So the, what Pam's referring to is rattlesnakes in particular are threatened species in the state of Minnesota. They're not federally, but they are in the state of Minnesota. Um, so we've been working with the D N R, um, which has been a long process because of this. Uh, so they have asked us to do some mitigation work. And part of that mitigation work was rerouting some of those trails. Um, so we will still be putting a trail up there, but they have asked us to reroute it to stay away from those dens. Um, the city is not privy to where those dens are because the D N R doesn't tell us, tell us where those are. Um, so it's kind of just been a game of guesswork of where to put the trails without them telling us specifically where they are. But, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
George, you had a question?
Yeah, I know I would have no interest in locating those rattlesnake dens wherever they are, but, uh, are these trails gonna be available at all, like during the winter time?
Yeah, all of our trails are open during the winter time.
Okay, who would be clearing the snow from those or you just go right through the snow?
Yeah, we leave, leave the snow there because some of us do actually really like the winter. Uh, so, uh, we've got people who snowshoe throughout the winter and then, uh, on the lower trails, uh, people also like to fa, fat bike as well. So we do groom the lower trails, um, near Holinger Lodge.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Alicia? No? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point four is the State of Minnesota Legacy Grant for Phase Two of the Bluff Traverse Project.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Councilmember Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to welcome to the city of Winona, the new Catholic bishop, Bishop Robert Barron. He is known statewide and he has some worldwide status as well too, as to, uh, books he writes and different, uh, programs that he puts on. So welcome him to the city of Winona. Look forward to his leadership. And I know he'll have a good home here. And also a thank you to the retired Bishop John Quinn, who is now residing in Detroit. That's his hometown, home area. And thank him for his leadership over the years. I believe he had thirteen years here. So wish both those, uh, gentlemen a, a very good future. And also just to touch that, uh, couple of weeks back on a Friday, I had the honor of being a guest bartender, raising proceeds for the. And also, just to touch that, a couple of weeks back on a Friday, I had the honor of being a guest bartender, raising proceeds for the Winona Humane Society. It was held at Sloppy Joe's Tavern, and in two hours, we raised $1,400 on tips and donations. I'm proud, I'm proud to say that we raised that much money, and I wish to thank Carrie Cushionette and Scott Brown for their help in getting this project to go off and be of assistance to me. Thank you all who donated to it.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander.
So, recently, a group of Winonnans, I believe, Steve Young and George Borzakowski were a part of this with Dwayne Vagley, worked to raise money for Ukraine. Our city donated $10,000, oh, $10,000 to Ukraine, we sent that over there, they did receive it, we got a message back from the mayor just recently stating how appreciative our sister city was of the involvement of Winona in caring for the Ukrainians, which they've taken in many thousands. And are looking for new homes and training and language aid, and need everything from clothes to medicine to shoes. And they will make great use of this $10,000, and they are very touched that we, I guess, as a community, went to the effort to provide that fund for, for the Ukrainians and their needs in, in their, their city. I also want to, I remembered what I wanted to say last week, it's about Broadway. Now that we've invested all this money in the new handicapped accessible access points, one of the points from the pedestrian study, I believe, was a unified look for our more visible or used crossings. So, I'm like thinking specifically from Wilson to Lafayette, making, as you're traveling, you know, east or west, if you're on the Broadway side, traveling east, you remove, make it 12 feet back from the corner, so that visibility increases for the driver and the pedestrian or biker. And that we unify in those stripes across the street, so that it's very clear for people where the pedestrian crossings are, and that it's a visual cue to people to watch out for pedestrians in those section. I'm hoping we can bring that back as an agenda item, because now is the time to do it as we're finishing those, those intersections. And it is really Wilson to Lafayette where we have an abundance of cars and walkers and bikers and users, and I'm hoping to see that come back on the agenda, so that we can address that pedestrian study item that talks specifically about visibility and crosswalks unification. Am I remembering that correctly, Pam? Because you were on that committee.
Yes, I think we do need to bring it back to discuss it, but our unified look to all of the major crosswalks is very important. And also, we keeping them, keeping them bright and reflective.
Okay, thank you, Michelle, thank you, Pam. On to councilmember item. Okay. Right. Good thing George was here tonight. Councilmember Muller?
Nothing for me.
Okay, councilmember Young?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Very good, councilmember Rupinsky.
Thank you, mayor, I just want to say congratulations to HCO on excellent production, I had the chance to see them last night at the Eastern Rec. International Center about the Winona Voices. And I had the chance to see a friend of mine, Keith McIntyre, performing that, who's part of the HCO group, and it was a really neat, thought-provoking performance, so thank you very much to them for doing it.
Very good, thank you, Aaron.
Under the, under the consent agenda, there are six items, approval of the minutes from July 18th, the final adoption of an ordinance to rezone the parcel at 1,200 Stores Pond Road, an ordinance to add no parking zones on Mark Street, and three claims, one against the city by Nick Rose, one by the city against Becky Doherty, and a claim against the city by Stacy Rosine.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, second from Eileen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The time being 7:40, and there being no further business to come before the council this evening, I move we adjourn.
I will second that.
Motion from Michelle, second from George, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.